Hello and welcome to Represent NYC Election Coverage. I'm Ben Max, your host and the executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in a Democratic primary for City Council District 10, which includes parts of Upper Manhattan, particularly Washington Heights and Inwood, as well as Marble Hill. I will introduce you in a moment to five Democratic candidates competing in the primary, the vote for which will occur in June, and they are with us for today's debate. This race is part of the 2021 New York City election cycle, which is well underway and poised to be the most significant municipal election in decades. All of city government is on the ballot, and because so few incumbents are eligible to run for reelection due to term limits, New Yorkers are electing many new office holders and the next roster of leadership for our city. There will be a new mayor of New York City elected here in 2021, as well as a new city comptroller, several new borough presidents, and many new city council members, including the representative for District 10. Now, a number of incumbents are eligible for and seeking reelection, including the city's public advocate and several city council members. There's a very crowded and competitive and open race for Manhattan District Attorney, and still more. Party primaries are set for June, and the general election in the fall will culminate on November 2. This is the first full set of municipal elections that will feature both early voting and the new ranked choice voting system. Now, ranked choice voting only applies to party primaries and special elections. We have a separate show breaking down ranked choice voting for you, so find that and check it out. But that means ranked choice voting does apply to this Democratic primary in City Council District 10. So be ready to rank your choices as you choose. Now, this city election cycle would be of enormous importance under even more usual circumstances, but it's unfolding at a time of great crisis for our city, raising the stakes of the decisions that you, the voter, will make. This next wave of city leadership will quite clearly make or break the city's recovery from the devastation of the COVID-19 pandemic and its many impacts on health, families, jobs, housing, education, and much, much more. New York City and this district faced a number of crises even before the pandemic, of course, as well as a myriad of other challenges, some of which have only worsened. So it's an important time of choosing here in New York City, and we're pleased to bring you many individual interviews with candidates for citywide and borough-wide offices, as well as these city council debates. We hope this and other debates and interviews will help you sort through your many choices and make informed decisions when it's time to vote in the June primaries and the fall general election. So let's get to today's debate among candidates for City Council District 10. City Council is a position that includes key powers and responsibilities around constituent services, local problem solving, legislating, budgeting, making key land use decisions, and much, much more. So joining me now by Zoom are five Democratic candidates running for City Council District 10 in the primary: James Baer, Francesca Castellanos, Carmen De La Rosa, Angela Fernandez, and Joanna Garcia. Thank you all for being here. Welcome. So briefly, the rules for this debate, and then we're going to get going. There's no opening statements, but the first question is something of an opening statement opportunity. Each candidate will get a minute and a half to answer each question, plus some time for follow-ups from me and brief exchanges after you've given your answer for clarity or other purposes. And if somebody criticizes you or disagrees with you by name or by inference, I probably will come back to you to give you a chance for a quick rebuttal, but that will be at my discretion. If you feel like there's something urgent you need to say, you can raise your hand or give me some kind of signal, and if I can, I will come to you. And you can always use the first few seconds of your next turn to talk to address something that was previously stated. So plenty of time and opportunities to get your points across. Later on in the debate, as we near the end, there will be a brief lightning round of yes, no, or short-answer questions, and there will be one-minute closing statements at the end of our time, where each candidate can give your final pitch to voters for why they should vote to you. All right, let's get started here. I'll alternate who starts each round, but we'll always go in the same order alphabetically by last name for the sake of simplicity. So, James, starting with you. What specific qualifications for the position of city council member can you cite? And what specific instances of public service do you want voters to know about? Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, Ben, thank you for inviting us all, and a warm welcome to all of the fellow candidates and good health. I am an unusual candidate. I have a background as an attorney, background as a journalist, the book author of a book called America on the Verge, where five years ago I was publishing many of the ideas that are being discussed now. I'm also a college professor. I have not gotten involved much in politics in terms of running for office, though I've been involved with many Democratic clubs, including the Vice President of the Antonio Democratic Club. It's changed names. I've been passionate all my life about politics. I finally am getting, so to speak, tired of screaming at the TV. Not that I scream, but it's time for us to really change things. We have a terrible depression of the likes of that we haven't seen since the Great Depression. Eight hundred and one million people out of work, and we need to have a completely new, fresh approach to the city. We need to restore business. We need to clean up the subway. We need to be innovative. We talk so much about being progressives. I have programs that are about putting solar panels and rooftops, that turn the city within 10 years into a clean haven of clean energy, tidal energy. I have plans to try to open up. We have lost a quarter million jobs or so alone, just from tourism. So I don't want to go on too long, because I imagine my time is running out. But I would say that anyone who looks at my website, you'll see the deepest candidate in terms of positions, arguments, no cliches, no 10-second town vibes. I have plans for everything, and I feel that I can offer the best leadership to our community, and I defer my time to everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca.
Yes, hi. My name is Francesca Castellanos, and I have been a lifelong resident of Washington Heights, Inwood, and Marble Hill. I have not held any elected position as of yet, but I have participated in many community groups. I belong to the 30th precinct community council. I have been the president of my tenant association for over 30 years. Basically, that's how I started my community activism. We had a horrendous landlord, a slumlord, who took us 30 years to court on no basis. There was no basis, basically, for taking us to court. She would harass us. Every case she basically lost. And through that, I started to organize tenants. I worked for Washington Heights Coalition. I went to work for Northern Manhattan. I also worked for the city as a disability specialist. And currently, I work as a Spanish interpreter, and I have worked as an independent contractor. So basically, I have experience in the nonprofit. I have experience in the city, and I have experience as an independent contractor. That gives me the experience to be able to help the city recover, because I know what it is to work for the city, what it is to work in a nonprofit, and what it is to be an independent contractor, and all of the issues that arise from this.
Thank you very much. Carmen, over to you. Your specific qualifications for the position of city council member and instances of public service.
Thank you. I'm Carmen De La Rosa. Many may know me as the current state representative for Washington Heights, Inwood, and Marble Hill. I've proudly served in the Assembly for the last four years. But more than that, I am a product and a daughter of Washington Heights of Upper Manhattan. I immigrated here from the Dominican Republic as a baby. And many of the experiences that my constituents have on a daily basis were the experiences that I had growing up in this community that has been historically excluded from government service and left behind for so long. It's what propelled me to run for office in the first place, taking out an incumbent that had been entrenched for over 20 years in our city's service. And so now I am running for the city council, because I know that the leadership skill that I have developed in 15 years of government, four years of public service, and a lifetime residence of Upper Manhattan has prepared me to deliver for our city. In a moment where we need recovery that is just, I have led on the state level, making sure that all recovery takes into account the most vulnerable in our communities. We passed a first-in-the-nation fund for excluded workers on the state level. I know how to pass fair budgets. I have always stood with the people. And most of all, I have been a bold leader in times of crisis throughout our state. And I look forward to bringing this energy to the city council for District 10, the district where I grew up and the district where I now am raising my daughter.
Thank you. Angela.
Thank you so much. My name is Angela Fernandez, and I'm running for City Council District 10, Washington Heights, Inwood, and Marble Hill. My mother worked in factories to produce the only attorney in the family. I graduated from Columbia Law School, and my mother was very clear. She said, despite your graduating from an elite institution, you must use this extremely powerful tool to uplift our community. I ran an immigrants' rights organization for 10 years in Washington Heights, and in those 10 years, I took it from a $300,000 budget to a $2.2 million budget before Trump got elected. Under my leadership, we led and won the sanctuary laws that exist in the city today, raking the mold for the entire country and being a model for cities across the country. I became the New York State Commissioner for the Division of Human Rights, where in less than a year, I was able to increase settlements by 25% for people who'd been discriminated against in housing, in employment, or in public spaces. I also served on the CCRB for three years, adjudicating cases of police brutality. And I got a front-seat view on what works and what doesn't work in keeping our communities safe and holding our police accountable. I am the only candidate that has executive federal-level experience. I was District Chief of Staff for Congressman Jose Serrano. Executive state-level experience, as I mentioned before, as commissioner, running a 200-person agency and at the city level with the CCRB. And just quickly in closing, because I have that unique combination of leading social justice movements, but also having executive skills to actually get results. Thank you.
Joanna.
Hi. Thank you, Ben, for inviting all of us to have the opportunity to make our case with our voters and constituents. I am Joanna Garcia. I am an Afro-Latina. I am daughter of immigrants. I was born and raised in Washington Heights, the community that I want to represent. And I have a combination of skills and experiences that qualifies me to be the next city council member for District 10. I worked as Chief of Staff to then Councilmember Jackson in the city council during the Bloomberg years, which wasn't easy at all. I was also the executive director for the Black Latin Nation Caucus. I'm currently the Chief of Staff to Senator Robert Jackson. In between, I think it's important to know that I was the executive director at City College of New York, and I actually started the first staff council in CUNY to give representation to workers that didn't have representation in terms of decision-making. But most of all, what I think makes me qualified is that I've been always on the right side of building coalition. I have over 25 years of nonprofit experience, but I've built coalitions and been on the right side when it came to really stripping down corruption in the state senate. And by that, I mean the IDC. I was on the right side when I walked 150 miles for all children and students in New York State to Albany to make sure that we got the funding, and we won the funding thanks to coalition building. And I was on the right side and one of the founding members of North of Manhattan is not for sale to resist the rezoning. I don't wait to be on the right side, and I look for the opportunity to continue making my case with the voters. Thank you, Ben.
All right, and anyone watching who isn't sure about the IDC or any other acronyms that might get thrown out today, I'll try to explain them, or feel free to Google what's meant there. But Joanna referring to Senator Jackson defeating a former member of the state senate's Independent Democratic Conference. We won't go into all the history there right now. All right, let's move into our next round. We're starting this round with Carmen and then moving again in the same order. What I'd like you to do is please each identify two very pressing needs for this district and specific things that you will try to do as a city council member if elected to address those specific needs. I know in asking this question, every city council district has many more than two needs. There's many to choose from. This doesn't necessarily mean these are the two most important things. They are just two needs that you're identifying with specific solutions that you'll pursue as a city council member if elected. Go ahead, Carmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, for the question, and you're absolutely right. The issues of our community are intersectional. They come and derive from historic disinvestment in the district. But two issues that I think are of critical importance are, number one, the displacement of tenants that is rampant in Upper Manhattan and has been for over a decade. I have a vision, first of all, as of being elected and making sure, and I think many of the colleagues here on this debate would agree, that the Inwood rezoning is something that we have to deal with on day one. I look forward to going to City Hall and making sure that we are able to take the rezoning and evaluate where we are and where we should be, and then bringing the conversation back into our community so that we can undo some of the harms that have been presented in that plan. I also look forward to making sure that within the budget process, we are prioritizing legal services for our tenants and making sure that we are holding abusive landlords accountable. We have started that work in Albany by passing historic tenant reforms, and I look forward to bringing that energy and that experience to City Hall. The second issue is an issue of underemployment and unemployment that has plagued the district for many years. We are the district that has more than 50% higher than the average unemployment rate in Manhattan, and that has been the reality for years. COVID-19 has exacerbated that reality. I look forward to bringing together a plan that will include coalition building and building partnerships to bring in educational institutions, local, and institutions, for example, like CUNY in the Heights, institutions like BMCC that are nearby, institutions like Yeshiva University, Fordham University, to make a pipeline for employment for our community, not just $15 minimum wage jobs, but jobs that will lead us into the future of the workplace and create a pipeline for sustainable employment.
Thank you. Angela, over to you. Two pressing district issues and specific things you would do about them if elected to the city council. Go ahead.
Well, I agree. We have many pressing issues because of historic divestment from our communities. But our small business community has just been devastated. It was devastated before the pandemic and even more so. And so, number one, I would push to pass the rent stabilization, commercial rent stabilization law. There's a bill that was already introduced. We would have to work with our colleagues in Albany, but because of my background, I understand that you have to work with all levels of government and be really smart about how to actually accomplish your goals in that way. And additionally to that, what I hear from our small business owners is that they're being devastated by utility bills. And there is right now a movement to make utilities and actually state-run utility that would lower the prices. And a lot of small business owners are actually getting very excited about that. So I would support that as well. And in addition, there is in the disaster insurance for business owners, which they've continued to pay for through this pandemic. There is a virus exclusion. There is a bill that eliminates the virus exclusion, and that would allow a lot of these small business owners to recoup that insurance that they need to be able to make them whole again. Another area that we have--
10 seconds, give me the other issue and one solution. Go ahead.
Mental health, and then we need to reallocate our budget so that we actually are funding therapists to be able to provide free or low-cost therapy to people who desperately need it in our community.
Correct. Thank you. Joanna.
I actually agree with most of the priorities that were shared by my colleagues in this race. One of the first things that I'm going to look at is the state of our education. I am an education activist. I do believe that the health of our communities really depends and relies heavily, and is reflected in the health of our schools. Our schools are under-resourced, underfunded, and overburdened. So I will look to make sure that there's accountability to the federal and state dollars that we have and to make sure that the fair student funding actually looks at equity, actually looks at building more community schools, actually looks at restorative justice in our schools, actually looks at getting away from policing our students so that we actually break up the school-to-prince pipeline that has pervaded not only our schools, but the immediate communities. So definitely, we have to invest and really take a hard look at the policies that are educating our children. We have a high immigrant community, and we need to adjust that quickly. Of course, housing. We do have the highest number of rent-stabilized units in this district. We saw with the predatory rezoning, which was initiated by the current council member, that land use is an issue that we have to contend with. And land use sometimes can be something that is hard to digest and understand, and we need to educate and continue building coalitions so that we aren't pushed out. So the small businesses don't have to worry about their livelihood just disappearing days because developers had what they thought was a better idea. And lastly, I'm going to go in there in the city council with my experience in negotiating budgets and negotiating and building coalitions. I'm going to go in there and go in with a racial and equity lens. There are so many policies that are wrong for us, and we need to take a hard look and work with our peers to revamp, re-engineer, and reconstruct.
And just quickly, Joanna, when you talk about education and making sure the money coming in is used well and things of that nature, given the city council's somewhat limited power in education policymaking and control of the Department of Education, what's the lever of power you're using there to do that?
So with every level of power, Ben, for example, I was chair of the Community Education Council. I was president, so I understand the power of being a volunteer. Most of my activist work was being a volunteer. So it is working with parents. It is working with community stakeholders. Right now, I am convening a roundtable of experts, of educators, who have been fighting for this money for years so that we can have community input, so that we can have a say in how City Hall distributes that funding.
Great. Thank you. James, over to you on two pressing district issues and what you do about them if elected.
Yes, thank you. Look, I really respect the accomplishments and service of many of these people we're speaking to today. But good leadership is about seeing the big picture. And the elephant in the room right now is COVID and a broken economy. It's going to take possibly years to recover what's been lost because of the psychological damage of fear. We need to bring jobs back, and the right way to do it is to restore the economy. No interest loans to the broken businesses who went out of business of their own, the ones that are struggling. I believe that we should have a tax moratorium for a certain amount of period to give them time to recover, and the small businesses, not the big ones. We cannot chase away Wall Street either. We must remember that jobs are provided by business, and tax revenue is needed to support all these wonderful programs. We have a palpable sense of fear. People talk to me in streets constantly about being afraid to walk in the park at night, about the terrible noise in the streets from the cars. There are many things that we have to do to restore people's sense of safety. The other thing is, I am a lifelong teacher. No one cares more about education. I sacrificed a lot of opportunities, made a lot less many, to teach at the college level and others. We need to restore the education system. That is the biggest form of racism, to not graduate kids out of high school with a simple reading and basic skills ensures a life of poverty and suffering. I want to completely rebuild the system. I want to--
Does that mean, James, what's a specific item or two that would be part of that rebuilding effort?
Yes, good question. I think we need to create more autonomy, more local school boards that they can move quickly. The Board of Education moves about as fast as a glacier. We have a system where teachers and principals, for whatever reason, are giving passing grades to kids who are failing. We need to be honest and say, if you fail the grade, you need to take the class again. We will put plenty of money for tutors. We need to completely rethink the way things have been done, because the education system has been mishandled for generations, and we need to look in the mirror.
Thank you. Okay, Francesca, over to you. Two pressing district issues and what you do about them. Go ahead.
I agree with most of my colleagues, housing and also employment. In housing, first thing, we need to make sure that many of the houses that we have now are maintained. We need to make sure that a lot of these HPD inspectors go and inspect and assure that the landlords do correct the violations so that will maintain a lot of the housing stocks that we already have available. A lot of landlords refuse to make repairs, and that causes a lot of apartments to deteriorate, and then their tenants are forced out of their low-income apartment. Second thing, we need to restructure this lottery system. The lottery system is not based on the needs of our community. A lot of the income that this lottery system is based on is based on Westchester, where the income is much higher. And I believe that we need to make amendment to the city charter to allow each community to be able to have a voice in when it comes to land use and developing their lands. Also, we need to really, really address the harassment, because there are harassment laws in housing, but nobody is making sure that these landlords stop harassing. Like I mentioned, I was harassed for over 30 years from my landlord, who was a slumlord. And even though there were laws supposedly on the books that prevented that still, she continued to do that, and the only way that the harassment stopped was when my building was sold. Second, in employment--
Just a couple of seconds. So give us one specific solution on the issue of unemployment. Go ahead.
Employment, employment, not unemployment. You know, though, I'm a city servant, and it's not the way people are treated. It depends on if you're an executive level or if you're a regular level. There's differences, and I don't believe that. I think everybody should be treated the same. For example, we have a problem with the city when it comes to time and leave. With the pandemic, that was something that still hasn't been addressed, and that's an issue that we need to start addressing.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to come back around the same order as a continuation of this question, actually, before we move on to the next one. But we're just going to do a minute each on this, and that is, some of the communities in this district have been hardest hit by the virus, by the health impacts of the virus, by being sickened, killed by the virus. What can be done to ensure that the communities in this district are less susceptible, are less victimized by something like this? Hopefully, this is a once-in-a-more-than-a-century type of virus, type of illness, and many are better prepared anytime something like this comes around again. But looking back at what's unfolded here and the health impacts on these communities in this district, what should be done moving forward about whether it's public health or it's housing or anything else that might be at play in your mind to help residents of this district not be so victimized as they were in this instance? So back to you, Carmen, for a minute of thoughts on that.
Thank you for the question. I think that, again, it's an intersectional issue, right? We have a community of neighbors that have historically been on the line of having health impacts that are susceptible to falling to death with this virus. For example, environmental factors. We know that many of the residents in our communities live in apartments that are full of mold, that are full of cockroaches, that are full of things that impact the respiratory system. We have to cure these underlying conditions, as well as, for example, we have in our district people who did not have access to basic needs during the COVID-19 pandemic. And that was one of the biggest things we saw, access to food. There was already inherent poverty in the district before COVID-19 hit. And so when it did hit, these issues were exacerbated. We need to make sure that we have safety nets that are supported by the funding that comes from the city council, but as well as the laws that are created to make sure that environmental impacts in communities like ours are finally addressed. And so I look forward to doing some of that work.
Thank you. Angela.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, you know, when you have people in our community that are already suffering, both from a health standpoint, a housing standpoint, and an economic standpoint, they are extra vulnerable to something like a virus of this nature. So we have to immediately, number one, for example, and again, this is at the state level, but pass the New York State Health Act. This is necessary. People have to be able to go and get free health care. So that's number one. Number two, we have our frontline workers who are consistently exposing their bodies to the public. And so they need to be able to have the right and the ability to receive immediate-- if we have another virus, they need to be able to get PPE immediately, right away, funded by the city. Any stopgaps need to be absolutely cleared. And then on the housing front, we have the 2019 Climate Act bill that was passed at the state level that requires carbon neutrality within a certain number of decades. What that includes is retrofitting our buildings. So let us make sure that we get the funding from all levels to retrofit our buildings so that they're healthier for our neighbors. And one more final thing, we have a lot of empty apartments in our district. We have landlords who are engaging in vacancy decontrol. That should be stopped, and people who are overcrowded should be able to rent affordable apartments.
Thank you. We're coming back to housing in the next round of questions, so you'll get more thoughts there and everybody as well. Joanna, go ahead.
So as my colleagues have said, our communities have inherently been racialized, have been driven by-- racialized, have been driven by poverty and have been, uh, experienced disinvestment on all levels of our government. And one of the first things we have to do in looking at how the pandemic had a detrimental impact in our communities is really prioritize how the budget allocates funding into our communities. Really looking at, um, it's not about equality, it's about equity. It's about putting more where there has been less and there's more need, centering need. More specifically, I go back to the schools. We need to ramp up school-based clinics in our communities, especially with immigrant communities and essential workers and undocumented workers. People trust their schools and to be able to get their care and their, uh, information from schools, it makes a huge difference. We need to involve our faith leaders much sooner than we did in this pandemic. Again, it's about really trusting, being culturally relevant. And yes, overcrowded of homes, we didn't look at that soon enough. We have to realize that with the pandemic, we have households that are overcrowded. One, two, three, sometimes four families. And we really need to look at fixing that problem. And last, uh, but not least, again, we have to really prioritize where we put our funding, um, and make the direct decision in leading that.
Thank you. James?
Yes, thank you. Boy, what a big topic. Uh, first of all, uh, the NYCHA situation, these buildings are a disaster. We have citizens living with mold, as pointed out, um, with buildings that are decrepit. We need to consider a complete change of the system. If we can't get the money to rebuild and make sure people have hot order and running, maybe we need to privatize. I hate thinking about that. But that leads to other things about, we have to have a city that's going to dramatically enforce landlord behavior. And we have too much red tape, landlord tenant court, it takes forever for anyone to get anything done. And the city is just very inefficient in addressing many of these problems. Rent subsidies, we, we need to help people out with subsidies. It's ridiculous that in the United States that people can work full-time and not afford their rent. You know, nineteen sixty-eight, a buck sixty-five, uh, minimum wage covered more territory than the Lousie. Fifteen dollars that we're getting today, we need to change that. Ultimately, people need money, they need jobs, they need, uh, healthcare. And I want to make sure that we move further, uh, in terms of making sure that everyone is covered, not just the poor, not just Medicare, but everyone. It's ridiculous that we have cutoffs.
Francesca?
Thank you.
I blame our elected officials, um, based on systematic racism. I lost my sister to COVID. She was a schoolteacher. And if the city of New York would have closed, um, in the beginning of March, like many people had told them, but because Cuomo and de Blasio had their arguments to see who was the better man. Basically, um, we lost too many people on their bad decisions. The same situation that they did with the nursing homes. When, uh, the outbreak, uh, came out, New Rochelle was closed right away. Why wasn't the rest of the city treated the same as New Rochelle? And we would have avoided many, many deaths. Also, when it came to allocating a lot of the PP services and stuff like that, the city was left, left, um, in, 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 uh, behind. The same thing with the vaccines injections. We have a lot of elected officials that say that we're their priorities, but in reality, we're not. And that's something that we need to address. And I apologize, but this is something that is very personal because I know what it is to lose someone that you love based on bad management and based on systematic racism. That's all I have to say on that subject.
No, no need to apologize and we are very sorry for your loss. We're gonna go on to our next round, uh, starting with Joanna for this round and, and going in the same order. And as I said, we're gonna continue on housing, which a number of people have mentioned, whether in your, uh, initial, uh, comments about the inward rezoning, some people brought up, or overcrowding or NYCHA. So let's dig, uh, into housing a bit more. Uh, if each of you could please talk about, starting with the inward rezoning and how you plan to handle that if elected, that is, that seems to be moving forward and, and, uh, efforts to block it, uh, uh, have not, uh, won out. How would you handle the, uh, implementation of the inward rezoning? What would your approach to that be? And then if you can zoom out to your larger approach around development and housing and how you would tackle that issue more broadly in the district, please. All right, so we're starting with the inward rezoning and zooming out to a broader lens on housing and development in the district. Joanna, go ahead.
Thank you, um, Ben. Um, with the inward rezoning, it's something that's very dear to me. Um, I invest, as a single working mom of three, I invested, uh, my free time, uh, over four years to fighting the rezoning. Um, and we're still fighting, uh, and I didn't just like show up. I didn't just decide that it was wrong. I was actually, uh, one of the co-founders and on the steering committee. And as part of that steering committee, um, in leadership, uh, we developed what's called the United, uh, Inwood Plan. And that is a plan that I plan to move in, in the city council. Uh, it takes it into, uh, environmental factors. It takes in, into, uh, because we do have flooding zones. Uh, it takes into consideration our green spaces. It takes into consideration our schools, our capacity, our infrastructure, our housing and also affordable to home. So one of the first things that I would do is to look at the United Plan that we had already developed as a community. Uh, because I do feel that ULA process should be driven by community, where the community is the architect of what happens in their communities, not the other way around. Because we have it really twisted where it is centered by, uh, developers. And Ben, I want to add also that one of the things, and then, and now I'm, I'm gonna branch out a little bit, um, in terms of, uh, uh, housing. And it goes a little bit to the previous question, which is supporting our community-based organizations. We need to fund our community-based organizations who do the underground legwork to connect with, with our residents, to connect with our constituents, to make sure that they involved in that process. Because of the way the state and the city handles contracts and the way the money flows, these, they meet up a chokehold in terms of having financial, uh, flow, which really impacts their capacity to support our communities. And that actually could lead, uh, to death in our community. So we'll look at, i- in addition to that, because I know my time is running out. I believe just like every school is, has a right to have a, uh, parent associations. I believe that the city should fund and equip every building with a tennis association, with the, with, in terms of tenants' rights, in terms of legal support. Every single building, a residence, uh, should have a, a tenant, um, association.
And briefly, what does it, what does it mean specifically to adjust the city's land use process to let it be more community-driven? What is, what is, what exactly?
Two things. Um, so we know that in the city council, um, they're looking at making sure that there's a racial, um, impact study as part of the ULA process. Uh, but also oftentimes, the community gets a heads up about a ULA process under, that's underway when the developers in City Hall have already set them and have a skeleton of a plant. And I want to reverse that process and make sure that if there is an idea of any kind of rezoning or ULA process or land use process, that it actually comes from the community and City Hall reacts to that, not the other way around.
And quickly, are there, is there any place in the district you think would be good for new housing development that's sort of mixed income?
Uh, it's hard to say because there's so much actually city-owned land and we need to look at community land trust. Um, that's actually one of the critical things that we have to do much more of, um, in our communities.
Okay. James, over to you, inward rezoning implementation and your larger approach to housing and development in the district. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Ms. Garcia has made some very good points and, and I agree with most everything she said. Uh, what I want to talk about in terms of rezoning is the very nature of how her community looks. So, so much development, we have open space. We have a space to the left of the one hundred eighty-fourth street exit of the subway. That has been trees and beautiful rock, someone tried to build on it. Why is it that we have to put something up in every darn space in the community instead of giving us more places to breathe air, to have trees? I talked about a major concept change. We, we raise our children in schools where we think a playground is concrete. Now, I've lived here for twenty years, but I grew up in, in the suburbs. We had beautiful trash and trees and baseball fields. Why is it that kids have parking lots with basketball hoops? I think we need to re-change the whole concept of how we run our city. If you want children to have a healthy life, let them see trees, let them have a better life. But letting schools be better, let there be a little more open land instead of what done, what was done in overlooked terrace where the trees were cut down. We need to create a more pleasant environment and stop chasing people away to the suburbs to get it. Why can't we make our city more beautiful? A whole new concept of life in the city. That's the rezoning concept I have in mind.
Okay, so that sounds like a, a, a pretty, uh, anti-development, anti-new housing stance from you.
No, 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 not at all. I, I, I believe that when housing comes, we have to make sure that it's done, uh, so that the developer also puts in trees and open space for the community. That's very important. Okay, so please don't get me wrong. We have to, I know we have a housing crisis, but let's not just put up ugly, uh, buildings. Let, let's make sure that people can go outside and have some park space as well. And have local business cooperating.
Is the inward rezoning something you've supported or opposed?
I'm not, uh, clear about what I want to do. I, I think there's some improvements that can be made and I want to leave it at that.
Okay, Francesca, we're going to you on the inward rezoning and your larger framework for housing and development in the district. Go ahead, please.
I also was part of the movement of inward rezoning. And one, one of the plaintiffs, actually, um, Miguel Cruz was, uh, is a good friend of mine. Um, so basically I, I have opposed the inward rezoning as it was, um. And the, one of the things that I mentioned, we, we need to do is to change the city charter to allow people in the community a bigger, um, response as to what they want, uh, in, in, um, in their community based on, on the type of housing. Uh, and give the people in the community the first, um, through, um, the community boards. Uh, people in the community should have the voice as to how, what they want, what kind of housing they want in, in, uh, in, in, uh, in, in our district. And also, we need to be able to, uh, do a lot of these studies, like the environmental studies. Uh, what's the point of view, uh, building housing in a land where, um, it's gonna create a problem five, ten e- years down the, down the line, if this land is not stable enough for that? And, um, that's, uh, regarding the inward, uh, the inward rezoning. And basically, also it goes back to how the city addresses a lot of its stock right now. Um, there's a, a lot of, um, buildings and apartments that if the city would, uh, make, uh, enforce these landlords to do the repairs that they need to do, a lot of these housing would still be available. People would be able to live there and, um, HPD wouldn't come in and shut the building. And then we have sort of like a contradiction where HPD has the authority of sending the inspectors. The inspectors inspect the apartments or, or they close down the buildings. And then also HPD, uh, has another department where they're, they're allowed to, um, accept a lot of proposals from developers from, um, for buildings and for land. What, who is there guiding, making sure that HPD is really going out there and inspecting these buildings and not letting these buildings deteriorate? So that in the future, a developer can come and develop those things. We need to develop a mechanism that, um, really checks on a lot of these city agencies and certain conflicts, there's too many conflicts among a lot of these agencies.
Thank you. Carmen, you, you've mentioned this a little bit already, but what would you do, uh, coming into the city council in terms of where the inward rezoning stands and implementation? Any insights that you have in terms of what could be adjusted or what you would be fighting for in particular or fighting against? And then your larger, uh, approach to housing and development in the district. Go ahead, please.
Sure. Well, first, let me say that my lens for fighting for tenants' rights comes from being on the receiving end of an eviction line and then later blacklisted when I was a child. My parents, um, went on a rent strike because our landlord would not fix our apartment. And that landed me as an adult on a blacklist, not being able to rent an apartment on my own. So that is where my advocacy for tenants' rights comes from. I'm proud of the work we've done in Albany, but in, in City Hall and in the city council, it is no secret that I was a chief of staff for Councilman Rodriguez when the idea of the inward rezoning first began. Um, I want to say that in that process, I, um, opposed the spot rezoning on Broadway and Sherman. And I actually will take credit for him voting no on that spot rezoning because I worked really hard to make sure that that happened. And later I left his office in two thousand sixteen when I was elected to the city, to the, uh, assembly. And I came out in opposition of the inward rezoning for the same reasons. Because I saw that my neighbors were going to be continually displaced by the inward NYC plan and what it had become. And so I want to say that, as I mentioned in the beginning, uh, if I am lucky enough to be elected to this seat, the first thing that I will do is number one, begin to hold these community conversations so that we can implement some of the work that our community has already done and some of the plans that have been mentioned. We have groups like Northern Manhattan Not For Sale. We have groups like Inward Legal Action. We have the community board who did a very thorough analysis of what the, um, rezoning could look like. I will take those conversations into account and make sure that those conversations are empowered within City Hall to make sure that any projects that are not finalized and are not, you know, down, like there's no, uh, crane on the ground, uh, can be reversed. I believe that with the inward rezoning, what we didn't have was a full conversation that included the entire community. And that is why we got a, a lump-sided wish list plan rather than a true, um, community planning, uh, document to lead us into the future.
When you say, uh, that the rezoning is going to displace people, how, how can you be sure of that? I mean, you know, one of the issues happening right now in the district is some displacement because there's such a tight supply of housing and there's people moving in and prices are going up. How does adding more housing that's both some market rate, some under affordability constraints? How does that mean a sure thing that people will be, uh, priced out or, or displaced?
I think it's a two-prong, um, answer. The first is that the inward rezoning plan did not have a true preservation plan in it. Where it said, this is the housing stock we have. And this is the plan to make sure that the people who are living in these apartments are able to stay. It doesn't have that, it doesn't address that. And number two, um, the affordability of what is going to be built because of the mayor's MIH plan, because of the way that MAIs, M, A, AMIs are calculated, are much higher than what the people who walk into our offices every single day who are facing eviction make. We have a, a community that is aging in place. We have a community of hardworking, as was already mentioned, essential workers that don't make enough money to pay three thousand dollars a month in rent. And that is what it's going for. A two-bedroom apartment in Inwood right now goes for two thousand six hundred dollars plus. That is not affordable for our community. And I believe that the, what, what, what is going to be built under the inward rezoning will cause for people to not be able to afford, um, to stay in Inwood. And that is something that will take away the character of the community that exists there now.
Those are, those are references to the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program, which relies on sort of the private sector to, uh, to invest in new housing that then helps subsidize some affordable housing. But as, as you pointed out, there's been a lot of criticism and debate over whether those levels of affordability are really matched to, uh, communities where it's utilized and MIH is, is mostly really meant for, for wealthier areas to bring in affordable housing. Uh, and AMI being area median income, uh, but folks can, can look that stuff up a little bit more as well. Quickly, uh, is there anywhere in the district you think could, could be home to more housing development? Uh, or what's your sort of overall thinking about new development in the district that wouldn't just be as a bright development?
Well, I think number one, that we don't have a wealth of city-owned land. Um, I think the last survey that was done as far as city-owned land was like nine spots where the city remains controlled, some of them through the Department of Sanitation, Transportation and the MTA. And so that is inherently a problem because that does not allow for the affordability to be as deeply financed by the city as it would be. So we, we would need a private, uh, developer to come in. And therefore, I don't think that that is, um, the right way to approach development in Upper Manhattan. So I, I would actually say that we have to take a look at what is available, um, to see where we could go. But I think that, uh, the most important thing is that the community is awake. And the community understands that having things like community land trusts, having homeownership opportunities like we have in our TILs, uh, which are the Tenant Lease interim program and HDFCs, which are sort of private, uh, uh, private, uh, tenant-led ownership buildings are the way that our city should continue to promote homeownership.
Let me stop you there. We're gonna come to Angela for your thoughts on the next steps in the inward rezoning and your larger framework on housing and development in the district. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you so much. Um, I just, you know, want to, um, share, I was, uh, vocally against, uh, the inward rezoning. And I think this was critically important when I was, this was while I was Executive Director of the Northern Manhattan Coalition for Immigrant Rights, where we work very closely with immigrants. And in fact, I also ensured, because I noticed that our population that we served, which have an average salary of nineteen thousand dollars a year, which would not be able to qualify for the affordable housing that was proposed as part of the inward rezoning, I made sure to connect them with Met Housing Council, um, an important on-the-ground housing organization to make sure that there was cross-pollination on the organizing front. And so I'm very proud of the work that we did there to help, um, provide this information, um, to our community. Um, uh, first, walking into the city council, um, I would want to walk in with a comprehensive community plan and ensure that in all the areas where we are able to. That in all the areas where we are able to ensure that um a community investment um is included in a meaningful way in this particular rezoning, that we get it done. But I also would like to see if there's a movement afoot to stop and freeze all rezonings. Until we can have an actual change in the Eular process across the city where it actually is led, where this process is led by the community. And not led by developers because as we know, the way it is now, the developers create their package, then they come to the community. And the community is stuck trying to figure out how to like kind of make make headway in these plans. Um usually not at, you know, at at great service to the community, um because it's very, very difficult. Um and so then the other thing too is we talk about the rezoning, the inward rezoning or any rezoning, but what we don't talk about is the speculation that happens. Right before even a rezoning is voted on. And so we absolutely need, I know that one of my colleagues said that they would. Fund um a community-based organizations that provide free legal services and organizing um uh uh, you know, areas which I think, which I agree with. But we have to fund our enforcement agencies like the New York City Commission on Human Rights that actually can enforce. Um and hold landlords accountable that are harassing tenants, which is a huge problem in our community.
And Angela, are there are there places in the district to target for new housing and if so, what kind of housing?
So I say, number one, there are abandoned buildings in our community that have been abandoned for decades. Um to me, the landlord that owns that those buildings should no longer be the landlords and they should be taken over perhaps by a community land trust. Or through another mechanism that actually provides um uh ownership uh to the people that live here. So that's number one. Number two, let's look, we have the highest slum lords in Manhattan based on the Public Advocates um yearly report. I say we look at them because the issue is not about so much creating new housing. Let's look at. Places where the housing is inadequate and make sure they get improved and then let's look at the empty apartments. We have empty apartments in our district and we need to change that.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next round of questions. Um some of you, because of the open-ended nature of some of the prior questions, especially the issues facing the district question. Some of you have touched on this a little bit already, but there's definitely room to go further for those have that have mentioned some things. But obviously, the COVID pandemic has hurt many small businesses, small business owners, and of course, those who work for the small businesses. What specific steps would you try to take in the city council to help revitalize small businesses in the district? And not just small businesses, but just sort of commercial activity. Are there things, are there programs, are there incentives? Um are there efforts that you would undertake to help revitalize and grow both small businesses? And sort of general commercial activity in the district. We're going to start this round with Francesca. Go ahead.
I would like to uh introduce loans, um loans with uh very, very low interests. Also, uh we need to develop a commercial leases, uh like um we have apartment leases, there needs to be leases. For a lot of commercials establishment and we also need to stop the warehousing of um commercial leases and also the warehousing of apartments. Um there's a lot of landlords that uh it's easier for them to warehouse uh a commercial business. Because uh they can, when they evaluate on the assessment of their property, they can say, well, this property rents for X amount of money. Uh because it's vacant, they can um use whatever money to bring up the values of that property. So um these are things that we need to pass laws to to um stop the these types of prac- of practices. And that will create um more uh small business owners to open um um a. Really, really work into um small business organization for for the city council from from the mayor that will assist. And we'll also cut a lot of the red red tape of opening your own businesses where you have to go through so so many uh applications and processes. So we need to develop uh and really work on the offices that we already have to uh. Like the bids and 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 um those type of uh community organizations and nonprofits so that we can create and help.
Okay, thank you. Carmen, over to you.
Thank you. Um so, you know, ma- I think many of us on on this on this debate stage would say that. Um making sure that the passage of the Small Business Job Survival Act is something that we need to prioritize. One of the things that has killed our small businesses is the increase in rents that they cannot afford with no rhyme or reason. Um and there's no ability for you to negotiate at least in good faith with some of the predatory landlords that exist in Upper Manhattan. So I would support and champion the passage of that legislation as well as making sure that we have a small business empowerment center. One of the uh most frequent questions I get in my office is a small business owner or a person who's wanting to start a small business who comes in to say. What loans are available? What um economic assistance is available? And there is nowhere you can point to. Um that will bring a clearinghouse of that information. We have some very strong merchant associations that exist in Upper Manhattan. We should include them in those empowerment um centers. I also want to say that we need to make sure that we are uh being creative about uh how we help. Our small businesses to make a recovery. For example, we've seen with Open Streets. That there is a a desire to see more open markets where our small businesses can come in and sell their food, sell their wares. Um and use plazas as a clearinghouse for some of of uh the marketing that they may not have. I also support um campaigns such as Restaurant Weeks. I think that the city council could do more to help to give marketing assistance to our small businesses. And finally, the last point is our community boards. We need to make sure that we are uh revamping the way uh in which our community boards interact with our small business community. Um there's often an antagonistic fight in Upper Manhattan between community boards and restaurants that are looking to come in for. Uh licenses for liquor licenses or other licenses. I want to create a space where we could have those conversations in all honesty and not prevent a small businesses, a small business from thriving. While making sure that our community can live in peace and have um tranquility, but without stifling um our small businesses. Because honestly, our small businesses are a source for employment and we know that gig workers and art workers have been completely decimated during this pandemic. So our small businesses are a key to that recovery.
Thank you. And just quickly, when you were referring to legislation at the beginning of your answer, you're talking about the the Small Business Job Survival Act that would put in. Uh new lease requirements on on commercial spaces?
It's um a bill, yes, and it will require mediation in moments where a landlord is trying to exponentially increase a commercial rent. Um I think one of the colleagues mentioned it earlier. I also support um rent stabilization for commercial tenants. It's much needed. And I think those two things together will begin to address the problems of exorbitant commercial rents.
All right, Angela, small businesses and commercial activity. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you so much. Um uh so I touched upon it already um uh earlier in this um in this debate. But I think there's another area that um uh we should look at, which is um what I hear from small business owners is sometimes the excessive fines. That they receive from different city agencies. And what I would like us to do is to reimagine the role of city agencies and actually have them play a more supportive role. And actually approach businesses with how do we work it, how do we partner to improve whatever it is that they may be doing that is leading to these fines? So that's number one. Um uh number two, um uh you know, I think that. A lot of things already exist in city government. The problem is the lack of knowledge. And that's where constituent services offices are critically important. And so the constituent services office should play the role. For example, I only learned a few days ago that SBS created a navigator program. Where they actually have people in SBS skilled to partner with the business owners and actually help them navigate the process to receive different types of supports. And of course, if it isn't functioning, then the role of the city council member is to play an oversight role and ensure that it is getting done. Um the other piece too, um uh again, not to repeat what I said um earlier, but when, you know, when we look at um uh the creative. Our creatives in our community, they too many times are small business owners and we have empty storefronts. So the city can play a role in subsidizing some of the rents of those empty storefronts so that artists can have a pop-up. Um uh uh opportunity to sell their art, but it also revitalizes and beautifies um uh our our streets. So um uh but in addition, I agree with um, of course, I mentioned the rent um stabilize, you know, rent stabilization for commercial tenants. Um of course, the um Survival Jobs Act, um and then looking at um the utility uh bills, excessive utility bills.
Thank you. Okay, Joanna.
Um I'm going to pick up where my colleague Angela um left off. Uh definitely, the arts community is incredibly important. I've had. Uh recent conversations where we did talk about uh using vacant spaces uh to revitalize um to revi- revitalize those corridors. Um we we do know that the arts brings vibrancy and that's one of the solutions. We have to be creative as to how to increase foot traffic for mom and pop stores so that. Uh everybody's not just like going online, which has really hurt our businesses, but really supporting the small businesses. That are around the corner, there are in our neighborhoods that have been around uh for decades so that they have a chance of surviving. Um definitely, I am a strong supporter of the Small Business Job Survival Act. Um actually, I held a policy briefing for my legislative colleagues when I worked in the city council as executive director. Uh for the Black Latin Nation Caucus, uh because I was also the chief of staff to the lead sponsor of that bill uh in the city council, uh Robert Jackson. And I I am very confident that with the new crop um in class of council members coming in two thousand twenty-two, that we'll actually get that um through. There's also, of course, I agree with my colleagues Carmen and Angela about uh commercial rent control. Um and there's an issue with property taxes and we have to look at how that's built in and sometimes passed down to the small uh business owners so that because it's just burdensome and unfair and isn't really. A controlled constituent services, constituent services and organizing. It is incredibly important to get information to our small businesses. Lots of the information is either in legal jargon uh that is difficult to digest or isn't in their first language. Most of our small business owners are immigrants and their first language is in English and we have to make sure that it's accessible. And we can't wait for a business owner to come to us. We have to organize and go to them.
Let me ask you in just in just a few more uh seconds here, has the pandemic not changed any of this, you know, before the pandemic with the economy flying pretty high broadly speaking? Obviously, many people struggling, but the economy going well, you know, there was a lot of incentive for landlords to keep jacking up rents on commercial spaces or to keep them vacant. Has the pandemic changed any of that? I'm hearing and and I'll let others jump on in on this if you want, because a lot of people are saying some of the same solutions, but I'm wondering if. Had if the pandemic has not changed the fact that the, you know, the power dynamics have shifted at least at least a little bit, no? In terms of in terms of landlords want to rent the space out now much more than they than they.
Yeah, you you would you would think, Ben. I'll give you an example. Um so in in our office, we had. A uh business owner, um a a Latina who uh got an eviction notice. And this was days after the moratorium on evictions for commercials, commercial spaces expired uh in the state legislature. Now, we were confident because of the way things move in the state legislature that it was just going to be a matter of days, but the landlord took advantage. Mind you, this space. Uh was previously rented by someone who unfortunately took her life because she couldn't make rent on that space. So to then perpetuate this kind of harassment again with the new tenant was unconscionable, unconscionable, but it was still happening. And so we wrote a letter on behalf of this uh of this owner, this constituent, um and sure enough, days later, the the moratorium was extended. But we still had to do the extra step of reminding uh the owner. I don't think it was really reminding, but pretty much enforcing, hey, there's a moratorium, it was extended. You're right now harassing uh this tenant. So you would think, uh but it isn't happening, which is why outreach, organizing constituent services are really important.
Okay, let's let me come to James uh to to round out and then if there are a couple other quick thoughts on on if anything has changed, you know, the question I just asked you on, I'll let other people jump in quickly. But James, I want to give you a chance on the larger uh question of of helping revitalize small businesses or save the ones that haven't gone out of business. Uh bring some back and increase commercial activity more broadly in the district.
Ben, there there's just so much we can do. I I'm going to just go through the list. I mean, incredible amount of stuff without even doing.
When you go last in the round, you get a chance to to write all those notes down.
Let I'm going to call it the Starbucks syndrome, okay? Every time there's a Starbucks, especially downtown, a little in our neighborhood. How many mom and pops are are put out of business that they're not selling that same coffee? And what the same thing with McDonald's? How many small restaurants can't survive? Uh how many delis? Home Depot? How many hardware stores are put out of business because of them? And these are major corporations that can afford to pay huge rent and and waited out until the small businesses die away. We need to really favor the mom and pops, give them major, major advantages, especially the mom and pops owned by people who live here and bear down on the rent. God, for God's sakes, God bless those people. We can't have red tape. Uh we can't have fines. I mean, one guy was fined. Uh because some city bureaucrats said, um you have to have tape and ten people standing apart a barber shop. No one was even in the barber shop getting a haircut and he got a major fine and he was infuriated. I won't put up with it. We've got to stop the whole way it's working and then there's so much we can do. I mean, mom and pops, they should be getting tax moratorium. They are struggling or going out of business for no fault of their own. We need to give them like a two-year tax moratorium, no interest loans. Do everything we can and do everything we can to give them the advantages so that the big businesses are not going to put them out of business and pay the rent and then strangle them. Because that's really what's going on. We need a whole new concept. Thank you. Yeah, let's go.
Just a just a quick minute here. Uh did anybody else want to just jump in on that question I posed because several people?
Can I can I add one thing? May I? Okay, um ultimately, the best way, one great way to help is we need to put money back in the pockets of people. They can't afford to to buy food at the restaurants or or clothing and and anything like that. We need to put people back to work. We lost a quarter million jobs from the tourism. Uh we 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 can't do things like scare away Amazon when they wanted to build a whole new system there. We've got to start restoring jobs and giving people money in their pocket.
Francesca, quickly, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, we we need to stop the incentives that allow a lot of these landlords to take advantage of the tax laws for having vacant commercial leases. And um we need to find these landlords who have commercial space uh vacant for met for a long time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to our next question. All right, last is the last sort of uh broad question before we go into a lightning round and closing statements. And this is about uh public safety and police reform. Uh these are obviously sometimes thought of as competing concepts. Uh there's been a lot of discussion, obviously, in the race for mayor. Uh of course, that makes a lot of sense given the mayor, uh you know, leads the police department. But this is obviously an also an issue for the city council and other city office holders to to talk about, you know, what what some see as two sides of the same coin. How to uh both, you know, ensure public safety, but also continue to reform the police department so that police officers and the department at large. Are treating people uh according to their rights and with respect and without racial racial bias uh or brutality. So what are your thoughts and plans on police reform and public safety? What are the district's needs on these topics? Uh we're going to start this round with Angela and then uh go in our our same order. So uh Angela, go ahead.
Thank you. So, you know, first, what's critically important is that we actually have to have a transparent NYPD budget. We do not know what actually are the line items of the NYPD budget. That's number one. Number two, we do know that they are consistently funded and their funding is increased consistently every year. And we need to reevaluate that. I strongly believe in cutting part of the budget of the NYPD and reallocating. That funding to things that we actually need and that will actually keep us safe. Because we're not going to be able to prosecute our way, nor are we going to be able to police our way out of a lot of the societal issues um that we have. And so I agree with actually a number of different candidates across the city have um proposed a a a community-centered plan. Around um having funding actually help people who are homeless, help um uh people who have mental health issues, help people who have. Um uh drug um uh drug addiction issues actually get to real care and programming. Um that I can actually lift them up and 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 take them away from uh from, you know, harm's way. Um you know, we do have a serious issue in the NYPD around racial profiling. We saw it very clearly. Um at the uh beginning of the and during the pandemic, in the way the police treated um uh people who, you know, are black and brown men. Um who were, you know, maybe walking without a mask, yet um uh you know, white families um or white um men, women in parks, they were very, you know, in a friendly way given masks. So we really need to come to terms with the fact that that is really a tale of two cities in the way in which NYPD treats different populations in our city.
And just quickly, Angela, in terms of the this large increase in in gun violence we've seen the last year or so in the city. are there things from the, the police department that we, we should have seen done differently to try to stem that crisis as it exploded during the pandemic?
You know, I think we have to look at what's, you know, what's called like the, I think it's called the iron on Beltway. What, how are these guns coming into our communities and then devise the solutions around that? Are the police actually keeping us safe around gun violence? I mean, that's the question. We have a robust police, um, operation. We didn't cut on the other police budget yet, um, the gun violence has increased. So we have to really understand what's the root cause of the gun violence and then take it and approach it that way.
Okay, Joanna, over to you on, uh, public safety and police reform and stemming, uh, gun violence. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I agree with everything that, um, my colleague Angela said. Um, we have to, you know, we have become a society where we're completely reactionary as to, uh, instead of being proactive. And we know that historically speaking, uh, the NYPD, the law enforcement in this country, um, has been, uh, based and built on some very racialized issues, you know, um, it's, it's something that we have to contend with and, and it's something that I see being grappled with across the country. Um, but when we talk about root causes, we have completely disinvested, uh, and demystified what it is to have actual mental health in our communities. Um, it is, it is a desert when it comes to services. It is something that, uh, ends up on the budget cutting floor. Um, when it comes to negotiating budgets on our city and state level, and it's something that has to be drastically prioritized in, in every conversation that we have about safety. We have to move from, uh, policing, uh, poverty to actually investing in our communities. When I'm talking about policing poverty, I'm talking about homelessness. It is not a crime to be poor. Our law enforcement are not equipped to, uh, really grapple with the huge dynamics and nuances of domestic violence, of poverty, of mental health. And we really need to switch and, and, and change how we approach our budget and, and our investment. Um, I want to also talk a little bit about, uh, policing our schools. Um, when you have a, when you have a student that walks through metal detectors, which by the way, uh, of course occurs more in communities of, of color, um, then you have a, a racist system that communicates to our students, uh, that they are destined for prison and we have to really disrupt and, uh, eradicate those kind of messages in our schools, um, including with our, uh, our police officers in our schools.
And briefly, briefly, Joanna, is there anything you think the, the police department should have done differently over the last years? We've seen, uh, gun violence really spike, uh, throughout the city, but especially, uh, in lower income communities?
Yes. So more specifically, when you look at the neighborhoods of Washington Heights, um, and Inwood, um, the, uh, there's a big issue that has actually been termed as public safety of the fireworks. And as we get into the warmer months, um, it's going to be a growing issue and I, and I think all of my colleagues who are community leaders in the on right, understand exactly what I'm talking about. Um, and there, uh, the city, city hall supposedly had this task force to address it. Not when it's happening, you're not going to chase down someone who has, you know, a fire, uh, a big firecracker in their arm, but they, there are chokeholds. Um, and, and there, there are suppliers that they could go after. And I think it could have been more proactive, specifically with guns. Our community is between, uh, the, the Bronx cross, the cross Bronx expressway, uh, and the other side of the highway. We are a perfect, uh, uh, we're in the perfect situation for the trafficking of arms. I know this because I spoke into the district attorney's office with the narcotics teams and they have to do more to keep our community safe, understanding that this is on the foot.
Okay, thank you. James.
Look, uh, good points are made by my colleagues. I mean, the guns are, are just ridiculous. Um, but as the child myself of a Jewish family that escaped Nazi Germany, half of my family were killed. No one feels more strongly about stopping bias and racism than, than my family. I'm still looking at sepia pictures of dead relatives. But I'm going to say this though, we have to balance things properly. Uh, our city, uh, cut one billion dollars out of the police department in July. And the anti-crimes department, uh, unit was disbanded, which deals with guns, which deals with trying to get criminals. Um, we have disbanded the police units that were trying to deal with homelessness and now we have an even worse crisis as if it wasn't out of the frying pan into the fire. We, we need to have much smarter, uh, positions. I'm not happy about the defunding. Uh, I want to make sure that our police are moralized and not demoralized and put down because ultimately we want to protect people's rights, but we want to make sure that we lost like dozens of officers. They don't want to do their job. We have cars like rocket ships throughout the community where the police can't do anything or don't want to do anything. We have to do this thing a lot smarter than what's being done. Defunding didn't do the job. Don't even get me started about bail reform. I mean, as a Jewish man myself, four people, I mean, four synagogues were attacked in Riverdale. And the guy was let out in the street like a week later. I'm sorry, but this is not the way to, to protect our city and balance the racial, uh, rights of people.
So, uh,
If a question, please go ahead.
There's, there's, there's some real questions there about, um, you know, the accounting that was done around, around defunding. I think most, most analysts have, uh, recognized the police department budget wasn't, wasn't really depleted by much this year, but let me ask you about something else you said, which was, uh, the disbanding of this plainclothes, uh, anti-gun unit known as the anti-crime unit, which is not a very specific aim for anything. What's your understanding of why Police Commissioner Dermot Shea decided to disband that unit? He, he gave, uh, a pretty clear rationale. He's not really known as someone who wants the police department to pull back. What's, what's your understanding on that?
This is my understanding. I, I, I'm not saying that I'm in agreement with what's been done, but we, we, we have to have smarter ways of dealing with things. We have to have much more focus on mental health. If people have drug problems, we need to have programs to help them out and not put them in prison. Um, I, I think it's time to revisit specific, uh, choices that were made to spanning that and have better programs uh, that will deal with drug trafficking, that will deal with gun trafficking. Uh, I might say and go back to the old system, but I'm saying that we, we have to balance law and order uh, and making sure that even some things like, like cars keep waking babies up at night. I hear so much about it. We, we, the police have to deal with.
Do you think you've seen in this district, the, the police department pulling back over the last year?
Oh, I was at the, the, the community, uh, meeting last week. The police are afraid to move or the cars drive away or they, or they have licenses or they go onto the sidewalks. We've got to take some action about this. They're demoralized, they're afraid to take action.
Francesca, we're going to come to you on your thoughts about police reform, public safety, stemming gun violence and, uh, investments. Go ahead.
I believe that the first thing that we need to do is basically, uh, when we recruit a lot of these officers, we need to see, um, higher that, that two-year college, I don't think is sufficient enough. We need to look at the training, how we train them in the police academy to be more sensitive to the communities that they're going to serve. And one of the things that I, I agree with is, um, we need to, uh, have specialized units, units that are going to go after, um, where the guns are coming into our community. Um, because right now, um, and the part of the problem with, um, I work for the district attorney's office and I, on a side that many people are not with, I work with victims. And a lot of victims are afraid, uh, to, to, um, go forward to speak out because a lot of the laws, um, that were reformed in, in Albany, um, no one is really defending them and speaking out to, for them. With a lot of these reforms laws that they did in Albany, a lot of the defenders are coming out and the victims are afraid. There's a whole lot of in- information that, um, it's not out there and we're not protecting the victims. You just can't tell somebody, um, a police officer who's not trained, uh, in, um, doma- uh, not domestic violence or dealing with, um, mentally ill, go out there. You need to really train them and you cannot send a social worker to go deal with someone who's, uh, has mental illness who is violent. So it's not just about the funding, it's where are we going to allocate and how we train people to really address these issues and, um,
Thank you. Thank you. Carmen, uh, you're going to round us out here. Your thoughts on where, uh, the city needs to go next on police reform, public safety, uh, stemming gun violence. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for the question and to my colleagues for their comments and suggestions. I agree with some of them. Um, I want to say that people in our community want to feel safe and they have a right to feel safe, but that includes all of us. And our community has a long history of police brutality that is centered around racism and a broken criminal justice system that targeted Upper Manhattan in the height of the drug war. That is the time that I grew up in Washington Heights, seeing my neighbors, my cousins, my peers, my brothers being stopped and frisked and being incarcerated unfairly and for disproportionate amount of time. So number one, yes, we have a right to feel safe, but all of us should feel safe, including black and brown New Yorkers. That means that we need one to look at the police budget, as many of our colleagues have said, and realize that in a moment of crisis, when we're cutting social services across the board, the NYPD's budget should not be ballooning. That number two, we need to invest in our community and the services that are necessary for young people in our communities to feel that they are prioritized. Youth services, jobs, cultural services, education, all of those things are necessary. Number three, we have to hold police accountable. This narrative that police are above the law is wrong. There must be accountability for all public servants, the same way that we as public service are held accountable. If we make a mistake, if a police officer murders a New Yorker, they should be held accountable. We need an independent CCRB. We need expanded powers in the city council to investigate excessive use of force. I agree with Johanna that we need to break the school to prison pipeline as a mother of a six-year-old brown girl in Washington Heights. We need to make sure that our children are not criminalized and that poverty is not criminalized because the conditions that our community lives in was created by a system that was not meant to serve us. Finally, I wanted to touch briefly on the state laws. I heard many of the colleagues here, um, referring to what happened in Albany. I will tell you that there was a national reckoning against racism and against the death of a black man who was held down by police officers for more than nine minutes until he suffocated on the streets of America. Black men are not disposable. Nobody should die in the way that George Floyd died. And when we saw what happened in our communities, Albany, who by the way, is complicit in holding up police reform laws for decades, finally, finally made a crumb of an improvement when it comes to passing fifty-eight to make sure there was accountability for police officers who kill people in, in, in the streets of our state and also on bail reform. Uh, bail is about poverty. It's about the criminalization of poverty. It's about those who are able to get out because they can pay their way out versus those who cannot pay their way out and remain in languish in prisons and ultimately some have died like Khalif Browder. I also want to say that what's happening, the brutality that happens in our streets is, um, is directly impacted in the brutality that happens behind prisons, prison walls. And I am committed, committed to not supporting borough-based jails in our city and making sure that we expeditiously close Rikers Island. So I have more to say on that, but maybe later.
It sounds, it sounds like it. And unfortunately, uh, we do need to go to a couple of quick, uh, rounds of yes, no questions and then our closing statements. So we're going to keep this, this, uh, so-called lightning round actually very brief. I'll call on you, uh, for a, a yes or no or a very short answer uh, as we go here. So if you are elected to the city council and could pick which committee chair, uh, position you get, which issue committee you get to chair, what would it be? James?
Yes, it's going to be education and it's going to be solar and, and clean energy.
Housing.
Carmen.
Finance.
Angela.
Finance.
Joanna.
Education, finance and land, land use.
Okay. How long have you lived in this city council district? Carmen?
I immigrated from the Dominican Republic and I've lived in this district since I was two years old.
Angela.
I'm thirty-five.
Over twenty years. I moved here in my twenties.
Joanna.
Born and raised here, so all my life.
James.
My family immigrated, uh, from Europe to Astoria and I've been living here for twenty years.
Francesca.
Since I was two months old, all my life.
Okay, name one, uh, transit improvement for the district that you would pursue. Just name one transit improvement for the district that you would pursue in the city council. Angela.
Actually more parking.
Joanna.
Ease congestion on the cross Bronx so that the bridge towers don't consume the polluted air.
James.
Clean subways and a bus system that moves twice as fast. I have a big plan for that one.
Okay, Francesca.
More parking and make sure that the subways are cleaned.
Carmen.
I would increase, um, our street infrastructure so that our buses can have more express routes and more on-time bus service.
All right, we got to cut this short to move to closing statements, but last one is this, uh, there, as I said in the introduction, there's ranked choice voting in these primaries. So assuming you're going to rank yourself first, uh, who in this race would you be ranking second? Francesca.
Well, um, that's difficult.
Undecided. Okay, Carmen.
Angela.
Angela.
I have, I'm undecided.
Joanna.
Undecided.
James.
I'm going to pass on that one. Depends.
Back to you, Francesca. Any answer quickly?
I'm decided also.
All right, good for, good for, good for you, Carmen, gi- giving the only, uh, the only answer on that one. All right. So, uh, we're moving to closing statements. We're going to start, uh, our closing statements with Francesca and then move in the same order we've been moving. Francesca, you have one minute to make a pitch to voters as to why they should select you first in their rankings on their primary ballots. Go ahead.
I'm tired of politicians blaming each other for things that are not, uh, happening. They, they are the, we elect them to, um, pass the laws that, uh, we want to be governed by. So basically I think that, uh, we need to recall all elected officials from, um, from the mayor to, uh, the judges to, um, your, um, I'm sorry, district leader. And that's the only way that we, uh, can make sure that our elected officials are transparent. So, um, as your city council, uh, person, this is something that I, I believe is very important, transparency and honesty, which, uh, we haven't had that from, uh, our local elected officials for a long time.
Okay. Well, as I said, there's a big election coming up where people get to install a whole new city government. Uh, Carmen, go ahead.
Thank you, Eminem and Ben, for once again, giving us this opportunity. I'm Carmen de la Rosa and I hope to continue earning your trust and your support as a candidate for District Council Ten to represent the community where I grew up, um, Washington Heights, Inwood and Marble Hill. I'm a proud product of this community, an immigrant, a Dominican woman, a mother, a daughter, a neighbor and a public servant. I am running for the council because the challenges before us and the fight we need to help uplift our communities are too important for any of us to sit out. I see my candidacy as an opportunity to bring the lessons I've learned in Albany in the last four years to City Hall and fifteen years in government to fight to restore and reimagine our city, our district, our communities, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood for all of us. Over the last four years, I've worked really hard to make sure that our community is represented, to strengthen tenants' rights, to make sure that our education system is improved, to work for tenants, to address inequities in our criminal justice system. And I look forward to bringing that energy to city council in two thousand twenty-two as we look to heal our city, not just from this pandemic, but from decades of austerity and historic exclusion and divestment. We need leaders that know which levers to pull in favor of that, of our people, in, in favor of our communities. I've been that leader for our community for many, many years and I look forward to earning your support.
Thank you. Angela, over to you.
Thank you. It's, it's critically important that we have a city council member that has a long tracker, track record of getting things done at multiple levels, not only from the ground in the trenches, running an immigrants' rights organization, transforming laws and creating citywide initiatives, including creating the only worker center in northern Manhattan that would actually link day laborers to very, um, uh, law-abiding and respectful employers that would treat their employees well, making that a systemic program, uh, but someone who also has been a commissioner and understands how to implement the laws that get passed by a legislative body. We need someone who has deep roots across the entire district and can actually unite all the different sectors that exist in this district, which is something that I've done for decades. We have a tremendous opportunity to have someone with the level of experience that I have at multiple levels that can actually, as Carmen said, knows how to pull the levers of government, um, but knows how to do it from a social justice perspective, from a community organizing perspective, from a very inclusive perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna.
Thank you, Ben and Eminem for having, um, this debate platform. Listen, this is very personal to me. As a single working mother of three black children, um, as someone who was evicted, um, from her home, I know what is at stake. And yes, I have many titles over the twenty-five plus years I have, um, in this community, working for this community and public servant. From executive director to chief of staff. from executive director to chief of staff to starting a not-for-profit. But the most important title I have is community organizer and a consensus builder. Whenever this community had a reckoning in terms of seeing whose side you were on, I was always not only on the right side, but I was building and I was coalescing with other right-minded thinking people. I'm talking about making sure the corruption does not exist in the halls of, of Albany. This is important. It's important to know what people do when it's time to really stand up, especially against powerful forces. I stood up when it came to, uh, fighting for funding every single day as chair of the Community Education Council. I stood up when it came to pushing back against the Inwood zoning and didn't wait until after around two thousand eighteen to say this Inwood zoning was bad for us. I understand government because I have deep experience in government. I understand how not-for-profit works. But more than anything, I understand how this community works and I know what it takes to make things happen and build bridges.
Thank you. And James, you get the next to last word before I close this out. Go ahead.
Thank you. This tweet has reported sixteen thousand people have fled Inwood, Washington Heights, sixteen thousand. They left because things are going south. And the establishment, the incumbents, the people who've been running for the last generation, let alone year, they're leaving for a reason. We need fresh, new ideas and fresh new people, a good centrist like me. Now, if you look at my website, you'll see deep, powerful ideas, more extensive than any of the other candidates, very innovative. Go to my website, bear for city council. That's bear in the best candidate, E H R, forgive me, forcitycouncil.org. And here it is. We need a new deal. I am a man who understands history and Roosevelt. I can understand. We need another day, um, um, good city council, centrist, practical people, a modern-day Ed Koch. It's going to restore everything and I can do that and I will be available and I will do my best to make everything better, get rid of those car noises. My door will be open and you'll be able to talk to me in the streets. That I promise, I promise that. God bless everyone. Get your vaccine and be well.
All right. Thank you to all the participating candidates. That was a thoughtful discussion. Thank you all for being here for this democratic primary debate among candidates for City Council District Ten. Thank you so much and thank you for watching. Represent NYC election coverage from Manhattan Neighborhood Network and Gotham Gazette. I hope this debate is helpful to you as you make your decisions when it's time to vote. Primaries are coming up in June and remember, they will feature ranked choice voting. Key decisions are coming up for all of us in the future of New York City. Hope this was helpful to you. I'm Ben Max. See you next time.